City Council Meeting for Monday, November 4th. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada."
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Guards keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to an alumni of our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move into the adoption of previous council meeting minutes, starting with our council organizational meeting. Can I get a motion for that set of minutes, councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the city council organizational meeting held Monday, October 21st, 2019 as presented.
Thanks very much councillor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing none, I guess everybody was happy with their council appointments and they weren't going to try and change them on the fly here. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries and that'll take us to our regular council meeting from the same date. Can I get a motion for that set of minutes? Councillor Minhaus.
Thank you, Mayor Bill Given. I move the council approve the minutes of city council meeting held by Monday, October 21st, 2019.
Thanks very much councillor Minhaus. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries and that brings us to the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? Councillor Minhaus.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council agenda as presented.
Thanks councillor Minhaus. Any discussion or debate? Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. That brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. We have two delegation opportunities at every regular city council meeting. The first is open delegations where anybody from the community can come forward and address council on any community-related matter. You're not required in this session to let us know that you're coming, but we certainly appreciate it when you do. And we do have one delegation that let us know ahead of time. I see representatives from the Grand Prairie Regional College Students Association. So if you'd like to come forward, we'd invite you to come up. If we need extra chairs, by all means, pull a third one up there. But please come forward, make yourself welcome, plug in. And just as you take your seats, if you could each introduce yourselves and the position that you have with the SCA and welcome.
I'm Lindsay. I'm the president of the Students Association. Nice to meet you all.
Hello, everyone. My name is Joshua Colkins. I'm the vice president external.
Jasper Leal, vice president external. And Howell Lillian, executive director back there.
Welcome.
Thank you. So as Mayor Bill Given said, we are from the Students Association of Grand Prairie Regional College. We are very happy to be here today, so thank you very much for your time. We really appreciate it. We just have a about five-ish minute, maybe a little bit longer, sorry about that, presentation. Just about some of the priorities that students have at GPRC involving the city. Things that students have indicated to us that they would be interested in seeing with the city. And we are just reaching out to start a relationship with the council and hopefully have many more meetings like this where we can discuss some of the priorities of our unique and important group in the city. So thank you very much for your time.
Perfect. And going ahead with that, so what we've got here is a survey just based on four main points. Survey based on four main points. So we've got city inclusiveness within GPRC. We've got post-secondary transit pass as one of the main points as well. And then the last two, affordable housing and college park redesign. We've kind of implemented together as they are somewhat similar. So our priorities, as stated by the students, a little bit difficult to read. However, the blue, number one, is the most important. We found that affordable housing was the most important to our college students as well. Other is just listed at the bottom there for you. Campus parking, not very related here, always an issue. But then we've got transit. We've got another two votes there. And then post-secondary transit pass came in third as the most important. Community inclusiveness was the second and the redesign was fourth. Continuing on, diving into community inclusiveness. This is what the students had mentioned, that they don't feel very involved within the community decision-making process. This is to say that we are representative of them and are going to be speaking to their issues. So what is it that you, as a city council, can do was given here. Ten people out of the 55 responses said that they'd like to see more easily accessible surveys, more easily accessible things in order for them to respond to, as they all have quite busy schedules. Active city presence, self-explanatory, more city involvement within the college. So maybe just seeing you guys around a little more. I know that you guys are busy as well. And then diversity within city staff and council. I'm sure that's worked on extensively as well. So communicating, this is more so for us. And again, we're going to be presenting right now. Post-secondary transit pass. We just kind of figured out exactly how people are getting to the college within the city. And a lot of people drive themselves, as this is a very self-driving community. So us is only about 10 individuals. So then we asked, would you like to take the bus? And then if everyone received a transit pass, so what we're seeing is if fees are included for students, would they be then taking the bus more if it's offered? A lot of people said, no, I don't want to pay for that, as I'm sure we're all aware in regular lives. And then a lot of people don't use them again. And do they think it's effective? A lot of people said that, no, they don't seem that it's very effective. Right in the next slide, what would make it more effective? So we've seen more frequent passes at stops. So instead of every half an hour, I myself use the transit system often. And I would agree with this, more passes at the stops. Later running routes, not very often seen. But those that work in the service industry are often getting off at later times than what is offered. And then low emission buses and low-cost transit pass, you guys have seen that already. Last, affordable housing, sorry, and college park redesign. So we asked how much they spend in rent per month. We're finding that this is the average, 40% is between $500 to $1,000. And a lot of people are finding that they struggle with that as college students. Full course load, 40 hours a week can be difficult in also maintaining a part-time job. So we asked whether or not they have roommates to mitigate those costs. A lot of them do, which is good to see. And then we've also compiled the numbers for how many roommates they have and how they're able to pay for those. There was an other option included, so you'll see the graph is kind of spread out. I've condensed those in the legend on the right, in the center area, to give you a little more idea as to what it is that people are seeing. So we've had people that say, well, I'm married. It doesn't include a married option for roommates, but I've just added those together. All these statistics will be available to you. I'll be able to send these to you at a later date. So then we asked, where is it that they're staying? Why do they have roommates, whatnot? So a lot of them are in that full house. That's why they have those roommates and why it's necessary. And then because of the college park redesign, we're seeing that, oh, sorry, back. That they are wanting to see more apartments instead of those full houses. However, they are closely in second place with that full house versus apartment. That's everything. That's our conclusion. You guys can read it, but I'd like to say that again, we do represent the students. And if you need anything from the students of GPRC, it is a unique population and we are here to represent them and be able to give you that information.
Thanks very much for the presentation. I'm sure council members would, I saw a few trying to quickly capture notes from the screen, so if you can email that over afterwards.
Absolutely.
I'm sure council will be happy to have it. We do have an opportunity for questions for the delegation. I see councillor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Thanks for coming today. I think it's really important for, as you mentioned, the relationship to be, you know, a fulsome conversation between the Students Association and council and as well as your Board of Governors. You know, we have obviously conversations with them on a fairly regular basis, but I think it's great to hear it right from the students' mouths. So thanks for coming today. I did have a question in regards to affordable housing, as it obviously seems to be a really relevant topic to your students. Were you aware of the opportunity tomorrow to come to a public engagement session where council is having a committee of the whole for discussion on affordable housing?
Yes and no. So it was brought up to my attention a little later than what was liked. However, we do know of that.
Perfect. And hopefully you'll have an opportunity to attend. And if not, maybe you can pass on to council through email for their, you know, for your input, for their information.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I see councillor Bressi.
Great. Thank you so much for coming here. Really appreciate it. Piece of information for you and then a question I've got for you. And just something that's great to let you guys know about is recently council gave direction to our administration to relaunch our youth council. And we don't know quite what that will look like yet. We'll be getting recommendations sometime over the next few months or sometime over the next year about what that process is going to look like. And I know in a lot of cities, youth council goes up to 24, 25 in a lot of cities. I don't know, again, I don't know what it'll look like here, but I hope that you guys will be partners in us in helping us figure out what that looks like and maybe even fill that up once we are in the process of actually relaunching that. But a question for you. You guys mentioned that you'd like to see increased city involvement on campus. Can you give me an idea of where's a few opportunities either for the city as an organization to be more involved or us as councillors and elected representatives of your students to be more involved and to be more present with them?
So those, some of the things that we had outlined there were direct quotes from students. So some of the things that they had mentioned that were in on the slide and were throughout the feedback were things like being at sports games. And something they actually mentioned was having a college seat on some sort of board within the council. So it's good to hear that there's, that youth council is being started up again. So I think it's both, I guess, both the councillors being involved in on-campus and activities and things like that, having an active presence, as well as students seem to be very interested and very keen on participating in things that are going on in the city, changes that are happening and providing that feedback. So I think it's kind of both of those aspects.
Great. Just as you talk about council involvement, council presence, that's something I'd personally be really excited to do and I'd be surprised if any of my colleagues didn't feel the same way. I think the challenge is, is as much as sometimes council might get to our heads, we're not necessarily well-known in the community. And even if I did show up at a game, I don't know if it would, if people would even know that we were there. So if there's any ways you guys can help us be present in a way that students actually know we're present, I'm very open to that. And we do have, and if you connect with the administration, we do have through our website ways to actually specifically request council presence at different events. And yeah, I think that, I'd be shocked if council, if the rest of council wasn't wanting to be more present. We just need some help figuring out how to do that.
Thanks councillor Bressi. Any other questions for the delegation? Councillor Friesen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So this isn't actually a question, but it's a bit of a follow-up comment with councillor Bressi. So with the youth council, I actually sent, when I saw your delegation and some of the things that you wanted to do, your delegation request, I sent a message to Sue Suk, who is the city staff in charge of the youth council and that redevelopment of where it's going. And I suggested that she, I mean, it came late, obviously. She's not here, but I suggested she maybe try to connect with you. But I would suggest the same of you at Sue Suk at our community and social development. And you would be able to just call the citizen line and ask for her.
Thanks councillor Friesen. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Thank you for being here. And one of the ways that you can participate in some of the council stuff is that we have public members on certain boards. And we're be, I'm pretty sure that we're taking applications here fairly soon. And there's an opportunity for you, possibly. You'll have to look at the meeting dates and how time they meet to fit your schedule. But it's a good way. We've had students on before and it's an opportunity for you to have a say in how possibly we distribute money or your say in on the way the city's going to be handling a certain committee. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thanks councillor O'Toole. Councillor Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. And thank you again, all of you, for taking the time to be here and sit before us. And hopefully this is the beginning of a more consistent relationship between the Students Association and city council. I guess my question is in regards to transit. During your discussions and surveys with other students, did any other alternative modes of transit pop up? Did anybody say, hey, I had this in this town or I saw this when I was in Toronto? Or is any, any things identified to you, the Students Association, through that process?
There was a couple mentions of other cities, such as Edmonton and Calgary, that they weren't specific. However, they were just mentioned.
Okay.
It's like, take a look at Edmonton and Calgary, kind of see how they do it.
I got the impression it was their bus models more so than other forms of transit though. Yeah.
Okay. Now, in regards to the students that actually were transiting, what did they intimate? How far they had to transfer on their buses? Like was it a one-stop to the college and they were good? They just needed more consistency? Or is it a matter of making multiple connections and they live far out in the residential areas?
At minimum, there was mention of one-hour bus ride to just get home from one stop. So say the college to wherever they live, it was a one-hour ride. And then upwards of two and a half hours if they were taking multiple buses.
Thank you very much. Just throw something your way, I guess. In regards to transit, we're constantly looking at the system and within our organization to find new efficiencies and alternative models that may be helpful to, you know, more active transportation as well as cheaper and more, I guess, environmentally friendly modes of transportation. Everything from tap cars to, you know, condensing our routes and looking at that. So we're constantly communicating with the public. But I'm just mentioning it right now so that you're aware as a Students Association that transit is one of those services that the city is constantly looking into and reaching out to the public for info and advice. And especially for students, it's sometimes a vital service. So I'd encourage you to be involved and encourage our administration to make sure that you're aware of it so you can make the students aware whenever we're going to do new changes. And more ideas in the mix help make a better overall system. So thank you.
Thanks councillor Thieson. I just wanted to ask specifically on the college park area redevelopment plan, do you know whether or not there's, has the Students Association been formally copied on the setup of that or in that process at all?
I'm not sure any formal kind of, at least I haven't received that. I'm not sure.
So who'd be, who'd be the appropriate contact then if, you know, as the city builds a list? When we do these kinds of things, the city will often identify stakeholders, meaning landowners in the area or business interests and other things. Who would be the appropriate contact for the city to put on that list?
I would suggest the president, myself, or also the vice president external. Honestly, if you send it to any of the four VPs or even the executive director to Howell's email, it'll come through to the right people as long as it's one of those five emails. But yeah, I would suggest president first and then that'll be communicated through our association.
Okay.
Thank you.
If we can make sure that we do that and then that way the SCA can be notified when there are events or open houses related to that.
Thank you.
And be able to engage, that's great. I don't see anybody else with any questions in the queue from council. So appreciate you being here this afternoon on relatively short notice and taking that opportunity. Was there any other closing comments that you wanted to make from any of you?
I just wanted to thank you guys again for your time. We really appreciate being invited to come speak and having a chance to speak with you about some student priorities. So yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Certainly really appreciate you being here again and look forward to the opportunity to build that relationship.
Yes, looking forward to speaking with you all very soon about this again.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, this open delegation portion is an opportunity for anybody to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. I don't see anybody else in our gallery this afternoon, and so I think it's unlikely that we have anybody else coming forward. So we'll close the open delegation portion. We do have some scheduled delegations in our evening sessions, so we will be back. But we'll continue on. We have no items of unfinished business or reports, since that would take us to committee business, starting with our first reports from our new chairs of our four, now four standing committees. Item 8.1, councillor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee meeting held Tuesday, October 29th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks councillor Bressi. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions? Then we'll call for the vote to adopt them. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Bressi, anything you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Thank you. We've got no business coming to this meeting about it, but some things for those that missed it was, a highlight of our director's service area update was we heard about economic development. And there's some work being done with Sexsmith, Hythe, Beaver Lodge and Wembley to create a regional economic development strategy. This is coming with a consultant hired by Sexsmith that they were able to finance through provincial grants. And I'm really excited to see us talking about as a region, how can we grow together? One other topic of discussion at the committee meeting was cannabis-related bylaws. Administration was directed to do a review of bylaws one year out of legalization. That happened at this committee. And coming out of committee meeting, their administration was directed to go and make necessarily bylaw amendments to do two things. First of all, to change discretionary use, the discretionary use authority on cannabis retail businesses from committee to administration, just to streamline some processes and help if any appeals come out of it. And also administration was directed to make bylaw amendments necessarily to bring the business fees for cannabis-related businesses in line with fees we charge to other businesses in the city. It was also an administrative recommendation to remove the cap of one business, of one retail business license per business entity. And if you're paying attention, that was a recommendation that came to committee. Committee made the choice not to move forward on that action right now. And mostly in light of just how long it took a lot of these stores to open due to provincial red tape. But there was conversation about how administration will be bringing that and possibly other areas of our bylaws to this committee for review sometime in the future. So that'll be a conversation we have again soon.
Thanks councillor Bressi. Move on to item 8.2, Community Services Committee, councillor Friesen.
Thanks, Mayor Given. So I move that council accept the minutes of the Community Service Committee meeting held Tuesday, October 29th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks councillor Friesen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Friesen, anything to highlight from that set of minutes?
You bet. So we had a couple of delegations. There was a user from the Eastlink Centre who was concerned about fragrances. We know that's kind of an increasing concern in public buildings. And administration there is working with her on coming to a solution for that. We also heard from Nighthawk and how things are going there. They've seen fundraising and sponsorship increase, which is really excellent, and an increase in school groups. And they are now offering year-round restaurant service. And if you've ever been out there for brunch or they have a different special every night of the week, it really is a great place to get out to, to have a bite to eat. In the director's area, we have, our facilities have been really busy. Revolution Place had a large-scale Live Nation show featuring a number of performers. And the Bose Events Centre was busy as well with the Scarecrow Festival, the Festivale, the Shindig on Saturday and the Family Festival on the Sunday. It was also exciting, if you were downtown at all, on October 26th to see the Halloween parade of all the little kids heading through downtown, hundreds of children. And their parents came out to trick or treat downtown. So that's always an exciting thing to get kids and families downtown. And just for the museum as well, the Folk Tales Tour was, three out of four of their shows were sold out this year. And I had the opportunity to go to one. It was very enjoyable, as it always is. Some tales were very creepy and some tales were very interesting. And there were a few spooky moments through the evenings. That was pretty cool. And transportation, there's, it's been going well. The fares are, there is an increase over budget as a result of our fees and charges review primarily that we did this year. Okay, and we, South Creek Ball Diamonds, we talked about the construction of a couple of the Ball Diamonds, 11 and 12, and moving them up a year. And that motion was actually defeated at committee. It was, it was considered that although we would like to see those, development of those, that perhaps we should have a larger scale discussion at the intermunicipal rec committee. And from there, we'll decide what gets to be done with all of our Ball Diamonds throughout the region. And then we'll decide within that context what to do in the city specifically. Thanks very much.
Thanks councillor Friesen. That'll take us to 8.3, the Corporate Services Committee meeting, and councillor Minhaus.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council adopt the minutes of the Cooperative Service Committee meeting held on October 29th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks councillor Minhaus. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Again, seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Minhaus, any highlights that you wanted to share with us?
Yes, there's directors, few things to say to things. Assessment and taxation, supplementary assessment and tax notice have been mailed to the property owners. Property owners have until November 29th to make those payments. Administration is working to arrangement with the property owner who have the property eligible for the tax sales. Assessors are working on the violations of the new assessment. And then the finance administration finalized the budget document for distribution to the council. The third quarter being finalized as presented to the committee in November. The human resources agreement set finalized with the CUPE and IAFF. The Information Technology Administration participating in cooperative organization onboard. Kajni and the KRIS 9/11 dispatch system is being updated. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Minhaus. And that'll take us to the last of our four committees. Item 8.4, Protective and Social Services, councillor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Given. So I just make a motion that the council adopt the minutes for the Protective and Social Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, October 29th as presented.
Thanks very much. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Again, seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And councillor Plot, I believe you have some business arising.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Yeah, there was, it was a light agenda, but we did have some updates from our, from Director Glavine, who was filling in for Director Manuel on it. Just regarding our community social development, the opioid tax voice is looking for a broadening of the conversation to include impacts on both mass use in the community. So they'll be planning some community forum for opioid education on November 26th and inflammation opium is already underway. We also were updated that taxi inspections are completed for the fall of 2019 and statistics are expected to be available for the next committee meeting. And lastly, administration was working on revisions to the Emergency Management Bylaw and the New Emergency Management Act on regularizations. We have a lot of committee business, other than we did have one motion that Mayor Given directed council or administration to bring back a report on information of how the city might move forward with online policing reporting, which I think is going to be exciting for the city. So I'm looking forward to that report coming back and then seeing what council's going to do it from there. And then after that, we dealt with a couple of in-camera items.
Think councillor Plot, there were some items coming to this council meeting. Is that correct?
Yep. So there was a couple things that come from the meeting, so.
It was the chair, those are yours.
Yep. So I would make a couple of recommendations. The first one is that council approve- The first one is that council approve the purchase of lands of Plan 0161AE, Block 32, Lot 6789.
Thanks very much councillor Plott. Open for discussion debate. Perhaps administration could just, not very familiar with lot and plan, but maybe administration could just give us a brief introduction about, about these items. Director Manuel?
Certainly. So the, the one piece of land discussed here is where the prime property management building is right now. And that's a piece of property that we're looking at in partnership with the Rotary Club of Grand Prairie. And the other parcel of land is located in the Avondale neighborhood. I believe it's actually adjacent to the, it's a consolidation of a number of residential lots that I believe are adjacent to the Dairy Queen off 100th Street there.
Thanks very much. Director Manuel, can you just speak to the, so the funding for these two purchases?
Absolutely. So the, the funding source on the prime property management building is a result of the grant that, or not grant, but the funds received from the Rotary Club of Grand Prairie. And the funding source on the second piece of land is coming out of provincial block funding, which is kind of a use it or lose it scenario for us, where it allows us to add to our land base for future shovel-ready projects.
Thanks very much, Director Manuel. Any discussion or debate? So this is just dealing with the first motion, the lots 6, 7, 8, and 9. Which of the parcels is that? Councillor Plott?
Yeah, so those would be the residential lots for the first motion. The second motion will be for the prime property building.
Thanks very much. Just so everybody knows what they're voting on. I see, so we're dealing with them separately, and this being the 6, 7, 8, 9. Councillor Clayton?
Thanks Mayor Given. Question for administration in regards to the funding source. Can you tell me what other opportunities that this money could be used for? And the, the amount, I'm assuming covers it? Does it exactly cover it? Is there any additional support needed through financial, sorry, city dollars?
Director Manuel?
So it's my understanding that earlier this year, we, we came forward to, administration was informed that we had a certain amount of money. At that time, I think it was believed to be around $800,000. That was part of this provincial block funding that was kind of legacy, that the province was saying, hey, spend it. So we came forward and with a proposal in partnership with Habitat for Humanity. Now, council had allocated a certain percentage of those funds to go towards that initiative, which we've done. However, it was later learned that there was a little bit more money in that pot than was initially anticipated. So this would actually represent basically the conclusion of the funds that remained. And to answer the question, no, there's no additional municipal contribution required to purchase the lands.
Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Can you tell me, is there a timeline, an expiration date, and, and the specific parameters around what the purchase needs to be?
Yeah, so specific parameters have to be towards affordable or social housing need. And the specific timelines seem somewhat vague in that we've been told that it needs to be used before it's taken. I think the government is undergoing a process, it consolidating all of its outstanding funds, very similar to an exercise the city's going under right now, where we have capital projects that have been on the books for a while that we have to clean up and reallocate those funds back to other causes. So I don't know if there's been a specific date set for that, but certainly the bureaucrats have indicated that everybody's looking to consolidate funds that are outstanding. And if they're, if the funds are not allocated as was intended, and in this case, that hasn't occurred for several years, I think we're getting a little thin on our time.
Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Can you tell me, as, as this multi-lot piece of land makes sense for a multi-unit affordable housing project? I can appreciate that. I'm wondering if administration explored any other opportunities, or why specifically this one, other than it's for sale and it seems logical?
So my understanding is that our land department, in conjunction with community social development, has been eyeing particular pieces of real estate across the community that have hit certain matrix measurements for them in that this particular lot is, is one that would be very suitable for a higher-density development that aligns with the densification objectives of that particular area. It's close to services, it has transit availability. It just checks off the number, the, the boxes they're looking for, and comes in at a price that made it desirable.
Thank you, that's all for now, thanks.
Councillor Clayton? I don't see anyone else in the queue. Then I will call for the vote on this first recommendation. Councillor Clayton?
The motion was made, so not a question for administration, just a comment in regards to the motion. I, I agree that this potentially is the proper use of funds and the proper land to purchase. My concern is, is the timing. Tomorrow, we have a council committee hold discussion on affordable housing. We don't know what the outcome of that discussion is. To be using dollars that don't have a finite timeframe to be used on seems a little early, in my opinion. I think that potentially this could be the right piece of land and the right funds, obviously, with no financial implication to the city, is a perfect opportunity. However, we do own a fair amount of land right now, in my opinion, that could be used for projects such as this. And without knowing what the outcome is and the next steps of an affordable housing plan, I think it's a little preemptive, so I won't be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Clayton. I see councillor Plott and then councillor Bressi.
Thanks, just a question for administration on this. I think it was brought up, just for some of the people who weren't here. If we didn't use this land, if somebody down the road, we bought the land, and a year later, we deemed that it wasn't the right spot for a potentially a housing project, and we wanted to sell that land, what, what would happen with those funds? Would we be able to transfer that to another housing project down the road? Or what would happen with that funding?
Director Manuel?
So it's my understanding that ultimately, we would have to request approval from the province to do that. But we don't have any reason to think that, that would be denied. They typically seem to work with us. The, one of the challenges I know with this piece of land particularly was, and one of the reasons they were using an agent to do the negotiations is because when the city becomes interested in land, once that's kind of publicly known, sometimes the, the prices change. And the only real sensitivity I agree with, when this process initiated, was frankly, prior to some of the discussions that occurred around the CCW occurring tomorrow on affordable housing. So it was seen that because it was privately listed, an opportunity existed to move on it. So that's, that was really the emphasis behind moving on it. It wasn't to really be preemptive of the CCW or that process. It was just an opportunity arose and the, we do have an inventory of city land, there's no question, but city land that's serviceable, shovel-ready, not, not so much, not for a project. I think you're all aware that we have an application in with the province right now for a permanent supportive housing purpose-built facility. And at this point, we frankly don't have serviced land that we could put it on.
Thanks, Director Manuel. Councillor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to encourage council to support this, even though I've got similar concerns to councillor Clayton in terms of usually this isn't how I want to go about spending money. Usually I want to have a specific identified project. But it's money where we're already testing the province's patience potentially, in terms of keep this funding for us. And also, even if we weren't already testing the province's patience, I think in the last couple of weeks, the province has shown that it's really quite ready to yank funding from municipalities without consultation with them. And unfortunately, this isn't the way that I like to make decisions, but in a potentially use it or lose it situation, where I'm not necessarily trusting the province right now to tell us what their intentions are behind this. I think we need to, we need to use it. It would be a shame if this money was taken out of our community because we did, because we didn't support this today. So this isn't how I like to make decisions, but I think it's the unfortunate position we're in.
Thanks councillor Bressi. And I'll just speak in terms of timing, and I'll look carefully at director Manuel, just to see if my memory is correct. But I am remembering that this money was provided to the city, the grant funding was provided to the city around 2015, or earlier? Director Manuel?
Yeah, I believe it was actually earlier than that.
Yeah, so, so this has been, this, this money has been in the city's possession for a significant amount of time. And council has made a motion, this council, I believe, has made a motion designating those funds to purchase land for affordable housing projects. Doesn't necessarily identify that the city would be the builder on that parcel. We certainly have that flexibility to partner with somebody. Land could be the contribution towards a project that somebody else completes. Or, as director Manuel identified, the province has shown a willingness in the past for the city to dispose of assets that were funded in this way, as long as the resulting funds are redirected to future affordable housing projects. So for all those reasons, I'd encourage council to support the motion. Councillor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Sorry, I have two other questions for administration. Director Manuel, can you tell me approximately, if you know, how long this land has been listed?
Director Manuel?
Off the top of my head, I want to say it listed in October, around September, October. We moved on it fairly quickly, because it, it did represent a pretty good deal to us.
And second, you may have already said this, so I apologize if you did. The land specifically needs to be used for a capital asset of purchase. It can't be used operationally in affordable housing projects?
How do you mean operationally, as in like a P3 partnership?
Well, no, if we had an existing affordable housing object, project, such as something that we're going to discuss, you know, potentially tomorrow at CCW, could the funds be used for operation and other investment? Or do you specifically have to purchase land or a building or something?
Yeah, my understanding is they're specifically capital funds and not operating.
Great, thanks. So my, my comment in regards to the motion, as I mentioned, I, I won't support it, but I remind council to think about, as much as we put the pressure on our departments to not spend money that was put to them for a project, if they don't need it and they're not doing the project, I encourage council not to suspend province's dollars, because we think it's a good idea. Sometimes governments are rewarded for good fiscal activities, and spending money that you don't necessarily have a project for, in my opinion, is not responsible spending. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Clayton. I'll just, I feel compelled to reiterate that director Manuel identified in his comments that the city of Grand Prairie does currently have a grant application into the province. Not all council members are necessarily circulated on that from time to time. Management on our behalf will submit applications. So we do have a specific project that is looking for provincial investment in the sort of vertical structure of the building. And as director Manuel identified, there isn't currently a site that we would be able to place that on. So in any case, should we be successful in that grant application for dollars to build a building, we would be required to secure land in some form. So there is actually a specific project that the city of Grand Prairie is looking to move forward with, that will require land. I don't see anyone else in the queue. So I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Plott, you're not off the hook yet. I just have to get your microphone now.
Thanks, Mayor Given. So another motion that come out of the committee was another one that director Manuel was referring to, and it was the, the purchase of the prime property building with funds coming from Rotary. The, the funds would not only include buying the building, but also the retrofitting and the, and the work that needs to be completed to get it up to where it can be used for a daytime shelter. So my recommendation would be that council approve the purchase of lands at Plan 1246CL, Block 17, Lot 9 and 10.
Thanks very much councillor Plott. I think director Manuel highlighted what project specifically this is for and how it was being funded. Director Manuel, anything else to add?
Yeah, just quickly, so it's not lost upon myself or administration that there will have to be a rezoning application as part of this project. The communication strategy that's ultimately going to align with that will be done in consultation with Shane's team. So it's not that this is a purchase and we walk away from our community engagement that's going to be related to this. So this is just the first step. We frankly weren't going to, none of, nobody was going to entertain a process where we zone it before we actually purchase it. So this is the first step of what's going to be multiple steps to make this project a reality. So just so you know.
Director Manuel, open for discussion and debate? Councillor Minhaus?
Yes, good administration answer. Is any timeline for that project to be finished? Like there are lots of things that have to go on.
Manuel?
Yes, certainly. So the, the purchase, possession, and as part of the purchase, we built a renovation clause into the contract. So basically, the, the building itself should be prepared for occupancy sometime in February.
I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I go back to councillor Plott to close. Councillor Plott?
Thanks, reminder was more just a process question on this one. I'm just kind of curious on how it works, because I know the, the, the city, I've learned since being on council, is definitely challenged with how we can purchase things. But we started this conversation quite a long time ago. And, you know, so here we are in November, and we're making a decision whether we're moving forward with it or not. I'm just wondering if there's another way we could be doing this in the future, where we can put offers on properties with conditions that council could have this conversation earlier? Because my feeling on this one is this, this would have went much longer, this deal would have fell apart. And I'm just very concerned that, you know, I don't think any administration's effort necessarily did anything wrong, but, you know, a two-month process is not normal timelines in a real estate transaction. I'm wondering if there's any way that this can be tightened up for future opportunities.
Yeah, I can say that this particular project, I think, pushed a lot of people outside of their regular comfort zone in that it's frankly, in order for us to get the funding, we had to overcome a number of hurdles. So the first hurdle was whether the club accepted our, our need, which ultimately they did. And with that, we had to propose what that would look like. So that involved a couple of different options, one of which was the prime option. Once the club supported it, we learned that the funders governing them, so the AGLC, then had to fit within their parameters. So everything we were doing was kind of contingent on another step occurring, which ultimately got us to the funding decision. But once Rotary made the funding decision and got the approval from AGLC, we then had to sign an MOU with Rotary as to what specifically the funds could be used for. Once that was completed, that's when we were able to make contact and make a formal offer with the, a formal offer with the landowner. The, one of the challenges with the formal offer with the landowner was we don't typically do a build and renovate kind of purchase, or sorry, a buy and renovate. But the intent behind doing that one, because it was using non-city dollars, which was part of our MOU agreement with Rotary. But it expedites the speed. If, if we had just purchased it ourselves and then gone to tender or RFP on the renovations, we'd be looking at a significantly longer timeframe, in my opinion, to get this project complete. So although I agree that the transactional component between the purchase and this decision here today, like the conditional offer and then the purchase ratification here today is delayed compared to kind of normal business. I'd see the project in its entirety from what's going to be funding to delivery of the, is actually going to probably be a shorter timeframe. But it's an abnormal process and one that I don't think we've done before. So we'll have to take it away and see if there's some room to improve it.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Director Manuel. I don't see anyone else in the queue. That being the case, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. I think that handles all of our committee business for the seat this afternoon. We had no items of correspondence. Maybe we could, with respect to delegations, have a motion to receive the presentation from the Students Association for information. Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. So moved.
Thanks councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We have no notice of motion for this afternoon. And so then we will head into our recess, and we will return this evening at 6:00 PM for our scheduled delegation portion of our agenda. We'll see everybody, everybody back then.